We'll call the meeting to order. If you all please rise for invocation by Supervisor Watson. Follow on the Pledge of Allegiance by Supervisor Sockwell.
Heavenly Father, may we use only our best skills in judgment, keeping ourselves impartial and neutral as we consider the merits and pitfalls of each and every matter that is placed before us today. We pray for peace within ourselves and throughout the world. Amen.
Please join me.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic which stands one nation, united in God, and the principle of liberty and justice for all.
I need a motion to call for an executive session to be held on March 12th, 2012 at 9:00 a.m.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Motion and second, no further discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign, motion carries. Committees and legislative reports. Supervisor Sockwell?
I attended the LPC meeting telephonic last Friday morning, and lots of discussion, lots of bills being dropped. I think the big thing is there's a lot of talk about property taxes and personal properties, so we'll see what falls out of that.
Thank you. Supervisor Watson?
I have nothing to add.
I have a couple of things to go over. One, I think everybody probably saw it, but the state lost a lawsuit on the employees' contributions, so Mr. Timko won't need to be putting that money aside anymore, and we all knew the state was wrong when they started that. I have no idea why they continued it. I've cut down a report here, it's still just a little bit long, but it's, we hire Jerry Hillier and Bill Lamb for our Quad State, and we also hire them for Multi-Species, and Bill Lamb attended kind of the opening meeting for the Western Regional Partnership meeting, which was held in Reno on our behalf. And the meeting was opened by Raul Morales, Deputy Director of Natural Resources, Land and Planning in the Nevada BLM office. The objectives of the meeting were to receive energy briefings and updates, identify state and federal processes for approval of wind energy and transmission projects, and review and discuss the WRP Energy Committee objectives, priorities, and the next step. The meeting began with an overview of the WRP by the Deputy Director of the Air Force Western Regional Government Environmental Offices outlined below, and I'll kind of go this quick. The mission is going to be to provide a proactive and collaborative framework for senior policy-level federal, state, tribal leadership to identify common goals and emerging issues in the states of Arizona, California, Nevada, New Mexico, and Utah, and develop solutions in support of the WRP partners, and protect natural resources while promoting sustainability, homeland security, and military readiness. The focus of the committee's actions will be to move from knowledge gathering to collaborative action. Issues of common concerns are addressed through the following committees. They have an Energy, Military Readiness, Homeland Security, Disaster Preparedness, and Aviation, Natural Resources, and Tribal Relations. A GIS support group works with the WRP Steering Committee to assist all committees. The goals are to promote improved regional coordination and serve as a catalyst for open and positive dialogue among the partners. In short, there is a coordination effort established by the military to coordinate initiatives on and off military reservations. Raul Morales gave a briefing on the Federal Renewable Energy Program, where the President's goal is to have 10% of the nation's energy coming from renewable energy sources by 2012 and 25% by 2025. BLM has developed a priority list that is subject to change as a result of Secretary Order 3285, and other activities have occurred, including the establishment of BLM energy coordinating offices in California, Nevada, Arizona, and New Mexico. Ryan McGinnis, he's the Director of Washington DC for Nevada Office, is a consultant and gave an update on happenings in Washington. His thoughts were that there would be no new public policy on renewable energy coming out of Washington in 2012, and the loan guarantees for renewable development are zeroed out. He said that wind production tax credits will be expiring, and efforts are being made to get ahead of the lost credit. Ryan should be a good contact for us in Washington DC. Rebecca Wagner, Public Utilities Commission Nevada, gave a presentation on their responsibilities in energy development. They regulate investor-owned utilities and provide an overview to see that all construction, development, and operational requirements are completed and followed. They also coordinate regional participation in renewable energy. Stacy Crowley, she's the Director of Nevada Office of Energy, gave a presentation on the roles and responsibilities of their office. The mission is to ensure the wise development of the state's energy resources in harmony with local community economic needs and Nevada's natural resources by leading the nation in renewable energy production, energy efficiency, and conservation and exploration. Their office works with other states, the regional organizations such as the WRP, and they have an MOU with BLM to coordinate with FERC and WEC. They look at ways to increase the load for transmission, they push eco-development such as geothermal, and they assist in tax abatement and encourage development. It seems there may be an issue with interstate commerce that has to be addressed by the state, since the economy is a big part of renewable energy incentive. Jim Bartridge, his advisor to Commissioner Peterman, California Energy Commission, gave an overview of the commission. California has a goal that 33% of the energy used to come from renewable resources. In 2010, the renewable energy generated 15.7% of the energy sales. As most know, the focus is on the in-state development. They're working towards balancing renewable energy in the Mojave and Colorado desert areas while covering some 22 million acres of land. They will be refining their goals and come up with alternatives that will include land exchanges. They're also working on alternatives for renewable vehicle technology. Rich Harvey from the WGA reported on the Western Region Energy Zones, where they intervened on private and public utility companies on transmission needs and found that they feel the transmission is sufficient for the next 10 years. They feel they need to have coordination, not direction, from Big Brother. There's a need to have cooperation, electric load during downtimes in renewable energy sources. Their goal is to shorten permitting process, and all should come together to create more efficient and streamlining permitting process. Dr. Lee Allison of the Arizona Geological Survey gave a presentation on the National Geothermal Data System. This is a national system that captures all data for every state and places it in a format that can be used by developers, clients, and just interested entities. It is a sophisticated system with a lot of application. The primary would be proprietary information from a private sector. It seems that large companies are developing apps where the data can be used interactively. And Dave Balot, he's the Department of Defense Siding Clearinghouse Executive Director, gave an overview of the clearinghouse. He stated there was a nexus with national security and renewable energy, primarily wind energy, where it creates an electromagnetic field that interferes with weapon systems. This results in the military installation opposing all development around installations or anywhere military activities were taking place. The DOD concerns were that where there were 249 projects delayed prior to Section 358 of the fiscal year 2011, NDAA, within several months after passage of the Act, 229 of the projects were cleared, with 20 still considering further analysis. Dave is an enthusiastic person, opens dialogue with anyone that has an issue or feels that Clearinghouse can be of any help. The Clearinghouse includes all the services. He stated there is certainly a need to have an area free of electromagnetic fields, but that area would be small, where they would oppose any development. Eighty-five to ninety percent of electromagnetic interference comes from wind energy, and mitigation is limited. The meeting was opened up to the participants to pass around energy updates. Comments were made. An Army Initiative Task Force is being created to develop renewable energy in Army installations. Fish and Wildlife Service has a geothermal, EIS, out for comment. Sutton Zia has 240 miles of transmission line routing. Geothermal development in Nevada is in a lull, where little, if any, is being permitted to develop. Wild Utah has a report out on guidance for minimal impacts on renewable energy. Nevada Bureau of Mines and Geology is reviewing seismic activity that occur in developed areas, primarily geothermal development, and the federal leasing regulations are being reviewed for update. Jim Bart, which provided a matrix of permitting status in California. Amy Duffy went over renewable energy permitting process in Arizona. These processes, along with other states, will be used to find ways of streamlining the process. WRP provides information and coordination is not found in other initiatives that I've seen. This information is up to date, and with all major players are represented, or could be represented if they desire, so this could be a good connection for all of us. One last thing on the Arizona-Utah Economic Coalition that we have. We had a meeting. We've moved ahead about as far as we can with the attorney that we supported and hired. We'll be looking, having a conference call with the Attorney General from Utah, and trying to get the Attorney General from Arizona to join in our fight and help offset costs to go ahead with litigation there. That's all I have. County manager?
Nothing this morning, Mr. Chairman.
We needed approval of the December 5th, 2011 Board of Supervisors meeting minutes. Any additions or corrections?
Motion to approve.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. No further discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign, motion carries. I'd like to start off with a presentation from the American Public Works Association on reaccreditation.
Good morning, Chairman Johnson, Supervisor Watson, Supervisor Sockwell. The leadership of the Board of Supervisors has long stimulated continuous improvement in performance and delivery of county services. This is reflected in accreditation through the American Public Works Association. The Public Works Department, Flood Control District, and Emergency Management Division of Development Services received a four-year APWA reaccreditation on November 7th, following initial reaccreditation in 2007. With the enthusiastic participation of our great staff, coupled with stellar support from other county departments, for whom I applaud, Public Works, Flood Control, and Emergency Services demonstrated full compliance, as rated by our peers, to over 400 distinct APWA prescribed management practices for uniform delivery of operations and services. So it is my, it is with great pleasure to introduce Ann Daniels, the Director of Technical Services at APWA and its Coordinator of the APWA Self-Assessment and Accreditation Program. Ms. Daniels traveled all the way from Kansas City just to present the board with this reaccreditation award. Ann, welcome.
Thank you so much for allowing me a moment of your time this morning. As a former city government official, a mayor for 10 years, and a city manager for another 15, loving the fact that each of you have committed yourself to the time and the interest that it takes to represent the citizens of your county, I want to applaud you for that. I want to also bring you greetings from the more than 29,000 members of the American Public Works Association across the United States and Canada. We're so happy to be here again in Mojave County, to be able to recognize the excellence within the folks that provide the services in every aspect of public works throughout your county. It's especially exciting for me today to be able to add a first-time designation for the first, across North America, Emergency Management Department to be accredited. Now, we have emergency management as a part of our program, but this is the first time we have a department that is being accredited as well. So they are joining with also the Flood Control Department then. So you've covered pretty well everything that will take care of the issues of providing well-managed, well-operated services, and the processes of making things work better within your community for each of your residents. So I applaud you for that, and I thank you for your continued support. The department could very easily have undertaken this all on their own quietly, just gone about doing it, and said when we got finished, gee, we're good. We've made these changes. We've made some things different than what we did before, but by your support of the accreditation program and their reaccreditation, that brings that group of peers from across North America in to review those practices. And someone from the outside then has reviewed those and determined that by all means they are important, and they are doing them very well. So that continuous improvement is something that only stands to benefit all of the county, as well as you of their commissioners. So once again, I say thank you for that. I think we have a couple of plaques that we'd like to make presentations for, if that is appropriate. Our accreditation or reaccreditation is good for a four-year period of time, and so we would hope that in another four years, we'll be back here again. We would continue to say that we did have two additional new model practices for the department this year, and we're very proud of that. You have the plaque in the hallway already for the Public Works portion of it, but I have one year for the Department, and we're having an emergency, not two, because it's done here, one for the Department of Emergency Management, and one for Flood Control District. So on behalf of the American Public Works Association, I made these presentations to you, thank you again for your support and/or encouraging profession.
Items 5 through 49, they'll all be considered in one motion unless something is to be pulled by one of the board members. Supervisor Sockwell, do you have anything you'd like to pull? Supervisor Watson?
Nothing today.
I'd like to pull item number five, so I have a motion to approve consent, items 6 through 49.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second. No further discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item number five is an extension of time for rezone. I would make a motion for discussion.
Second.
This is, this item has already been extended once already?
I believe that's correct, sir.
When is it expire now? Is it expired as of already today? Do you know?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, it will expire. If this extension is not approved, it'll expire one year from the board action previously. Let me pull that up, and I'll tell you what date that is. Mr. Johnson, October 5th was the expiration date, so it would be October 5th, 2011 was the date it expired.
Okay, what's confusing to me then is it says this extension of time will be in effect until October 5th, 2012, or if the required filing fee for an additional year is paid prior to consideration by the Board of Supervisors until October 5th, 2013. So this is a... So if they have already paid us today, and we approve this, then it'll be a two-year extension. If they haven't paid us today, it's a one-year extension?
That's correct, sir.
Do you have cash in your pocket for the second year?
Not that I'm aware.
Okay, so then the motion for approval would be on, if that's what we go with, would be till October 5th, 2012? And we have that money already?
Yes, that was paid at the time of application.
Okay. And that's the only questions I have. Any board members have any other questions?
No further questions.
What is the pleasure of the board?
I'd like to make a motion to extend the extension of time for rezone, Resolution Number 2012-16, just in the basic premise that right now the economy is still being one of the major hurdles for many of the actions and investments of our constituents.
And that would be till October 5th of 2012?
Yeah.
Do you have a second?
Second motion.
A motion and a second. No further discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign, motion carries. We have number 58. We have quite a few people signed up for that. It is a public hearing. Board of Supervisors Resolution 2012-018, Minor Amendment to the Virgin River Communities Area Plan. I will open the public hearing. Mr. Tim Orelli?
Yes.
Would you like to come and address the board, or are you just here for, in case you have questions?
I'd like to speak briefly.
Could you state your address to Mr. Orell, please, for us for the record?
1022 Las Vegas Way, scenic Arizona.
Thank you, sir.
I read a couple complaints from the last meeting, from the Childers and Children's family. Sounds to me like they don't know I have horses now. I've had horses for years, and they're unaware that I've been giving horse rides for six years, starting my seventh year now. In fact, I have a letter here from a man who sent me his daughter last year, and she worked with me and rode my horses through the summer. She's now in veterinarian school. He was thanking me and hoping that she can return next summer to ride with me. I'm sure these complainants didn't know anything about any of that. They don't know anything about my horses in the past. And my request to rezone is that I'm asking permission to charge a fee for my services. If people come and ride this spring and summer, I would like to be able to have a little pay for my work. I've never charged or asked or received a penny from the six years in the past, but I would like to receive a little pay. That's my asking permission for that. The only thing that would change in rezone is really no noticeable changes. Everything has been set in place for years now. The only change is I'm going from a free ride to a fee ride, from F R E E ride to a F E E ride. That's the only changes that's going to take place. There'll be no noticeable changes from the past. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Does anybody have any questions?
I can answer questions.
Does anybody have any questions, the gentleman? No? Thank you very much, sir.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
I have no one else signed up. I will close the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve item 58.
Thank you. I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. No further discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item number 50B is a public hearing. I'll open the public hearing. Adoption of Board of Supervisors Resolution 2012-019 on the rezone. It's the same gentleman that signed up. I don't know that we need to have him up forward. Is there anybody else who would like to address the board regarding 50B? I will close the public hearing. It was the pleasure of the board.
Make a motion to adopt for the rezone?
Second. No further discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item number 51A is a public hearing. I will open the public hearing. Adoption of Board of Supervisors Resolution 2012-020. This is approving a request for the Board of Supervisors to determine that the proposed amendments to the Mojave County General Plan and the Sterling Area Plan shall be considered minor amendments as authorized by Policy 27.7 of the Mojave County General Plan and Section 40.2b, 3, and 4 of the Mojave County zoning ordinance in the Mojave County general area north of Interstate 40 and approximately two miles east of Oldman Highway, County Route 1, Mojave County, Arizona. I have some people signed up.
My name is Mark Shaver. Good morning, board. I live at 4054 Hiller Drive, Beeview, Arizona. And when I first read this, I was listening to the P&amp;Z Department on this issue, I was under the impression that this was going to be a 21-square-mile photophотic, but then when I read 51C, it kind of left me with the impression that it was only 35 acres and zoned for photophotic. Is that correct?
We could do is have, do we have those maps available, the old map and the new map, where we can put them up?
Yes, we do. The item before you right now, that should be the first map. That would have been, I believe, the 2010 approval.
Mark, if you want, Mark, Mr. Shaver, if you just want to have a seat, I'll go over this, maybe clarify for you and the other speakers, and then I can call you back up, see if your questions...
Okay.
Okay. What we'll do is, Ms. Ballard, can you kind of go over and explain to us what the changes are on the two, if everybody understands?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. The first map is what was adopted on the northern portion, and that would be the portion north, basically north of the railroad line, was adopted on November 15th, 2010. And that was the change from the original Sterling Area Plan, which was a mixed-use development, included residential, commercial, and industrial uses, to change that to an energy, renewable energy designation. And it did change the land use designation to industrial. Industrial was always foreseen in the area that is south of there between the railroad line and the I-40. The proposal at that point in time that was included in the area plan was for, was for a Sterling energy, or excuse me, a Sterling engine technology. I believe that the original being approximately 22 square miles was, his original statement was correct. If I could have the second slide. The second slide shows the southern portion, and that's the area between the railroad line and the I-40, and that went to heavy industrial as well. In addition, this amendment moved a portion of the areas that were included in the desert hills area plan to Sterling area plan, just for continuity. The blue areas were, the dark blue areas are areas of Arizona state land. Now, the original proposal also included in the northern part an area of state land that in this proposal is no longer in there. On the third map is the current proposal, the proposal that's before the board today, if I can have that one. Can I have the next map, please? There we go, thank you. This proposal shows the northern part in orange, and there's a dark box in the middle of it, that's the Arizona state land that's being exempted from this proposal. Furthermore, the change that is being proposed, at least in the, both the general plan and the Sterling area plan, is a simple text change. And exemption or removal of that state, Arizona state parcel. The text change would simply move the technology from the Sterling engine technology to a photovoltaic technology. The reason the applicants are requesting that is the manufacturer of the Sterling engine has, is no longer in business, is no longer manufacturing those, that, that type of machinery. The change in the zoning would go from an energy overlay of energy Sterling engine to energy solar photovoltaic. Now, the rezone will not apply to the southern area that's in green. The reason for that, that's already zoned MX, and that allows for, MX as a, as a right allows for energy, renewable energy development. So that is not being included, what's being rezoned would be the area in orange.
Then that area is not being into heavy manufacturing, it's just the difference in
Yes.
Technology used for
Mr. Johnson and members of the board, that is correct. The, the area in orange will have an overlay zone, so your base zone will remain agricultural, residential, and your overlay zone will be entered, the end of the proposal would be energy solar photovoltaic.
And what about access? I know there's been a lot of concerns from the people out there regarding, before, the majority of the access was gonna come off of the interstate. Now, I understand that people are hearing that the access is gonna be to the rear or the north of the property on. Is that true? They're worried about traffic coming through there. Before, before we talked about limiting traffic to off Interstate forty.
Mr. Johnson, members of the board, there, the Department of Transportation had a rerouting proposal for Highway ninety-five. They would have taken it off of I forty and, and just by this parcel. That structure has not been constructed, and I have to admit, I don't know, I'm not sure exactly where the alignment is in this area as, as a proposal from Department of Transportation. The only access available to the property right now is off to the east using Old Highway sixty-six, or I think, I believe it's called currently County Route one. The access through the parcel is off of Polaris Road. During the public hearing with the commission, the applicant concurred that they would keep Polaris Road open and would not close it.
This, it's called Polaris Road, is it a county road?
Mr. Johnson, I do not know that.
Are we gonna require, with the amount of traffic for that road to be paved?
Mr. Johnson, members of the board, I believe at the commission meeting, the applicant did commit to, or did, yeah, did commit to paving the road.
Okay, Mr. Shaver, would you like to?
So the section in orange actually encompasses twenty square miles, is that correct?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, in total, it is twenty-two square miles. The section in orange would be a portion of that.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Jack Jacob?
My name is Jack Jacob, I'm from seventy-four sixty-three East Timber Lane Court in Scottsdale, Arizona. I'm a general partner and owner of the Sterling land that this project will go on, and I'm basically here to just say we approve, as landowners, we approve this minor amendment because it is very, changes the zoning very minimal to what it was at the time. If there's any questions, we'll answer that.
Thank you. Any questions, Mr. Jacob? Mr. Bob Hibbs?
Good morning, I'm Bob Hibbs, I'm the managing member of Sterling Solar LLC, and I'm the applicant. I came up to describe all of this, but I, I think that the description was very apt. We are here to answer any questions, and so if you, if you wanna call us back, please let us know.
All right, could you state your address, Mr. Hibbs?
Yes, six oh one five Seventy-seventh Avenue Southeast, Mercer Island, Washington.
Thank you, sir. Any questions, Mr. Hibbs, right now?
I have no question.
Oh, okay. Thank you, Mr. Hibbs. Mr. Don McWhorter?
Good morning, gentlemen. My name is Don McWhorter, I'm from Golden Shores. I was asked by the people of Golden Shores, since I'm the president of the Golden Shores Civic Association, to come and speak on their behalf. They are adamantly against rezoning for the solar project. For several reasons, number one is that from the easternmost part of Golden Shores, it's only one mile to where this is going to begin. I know in the thing it says two miles from Oldman Road, but yet the Golden Shores extends another mile east, I'm sorry, west. And so that would make it from, especially from my home, I live on Waichuca. And that would make it only exactly one mile from my home to where these solar panels would be installed. Secondly, we're concerned that right now Polaris Road seems to be the only access to this. And that comes off of Route one, which is directly in Golden Shores. And with, if anyone has traveled Route one, you know that Route one is not a very large highway. And Polaris Road is just a, about a mile from our school. And there's going to be a lot of equipment going in and out from, from Golden Shores. And we're concerned about the, the children and about the traffic and, and the disruptions of, of our community. Another problem that we find is that we feel that, that rezoning this, this property at the present time seems to be a waste of time, since it's my understanding that, that money to finance this, this project is still pending from is my time up?
Oh.
It's still pending from, from grants that's supposed to be gotten. If these grants fall through, then what's going to happen? Are they gonna move some type of other industry into this property, or, or just leave it there? We, we had signatures, we had a hundred, a hundred and seventy-five signatures that we took to the planning and zoning, to present that we're against this project, and to no avail, because they went ahead and passed it. I thank you for your time.
Mr. McWhorter, could you state your address for us, please?
Oh, yes, it's fifty-four seventy-one Waichuca.
Thank you, sir. Anybody have any questions, Mr. McWhorter?
I, I have one question. What was the difference between this project and, and the, and the previous one? Cause I know the previous one, the Golden Shores, had embraced, you know, the, the previous.
I don't understand.
Was it because of the access off forty, was that basically, I mean, it's taken a lot of the?
Yeah, we, we were under the impression that, that, that most of the, the, the access would be from forty, but we find that, that Polaris Road was gonna be the, the main entrance and exit. And like I said, that's not even a mile, that's probably about two hundred yards from our school.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Mr. Bill Ozard?
Good morning, members of the council, my name is Bill Ozard. I reside at one two five nine nine South Yuma Drive, Golden Shores. And just to let you know, it is less than a mile due east of our easternmost road, which is South Yuma Drive. And everything McWhorter said is absolutely correct. Issues are, the, the school is way too close. And originally, we thought that they were gonna extend ninety-five by the pilot station north for access. Doesn't look like that's the way they're gonna be going, and, you know, it's just making everything just too in your face. Not opposed to solar, but having it less than a mile away is a real issue, and the, you know, obviously, the traffic that's gonna be generated is gonna be huge. And I just don't think anybody's aware of the impact it's gonna make on a small community like Golden Shores.
You have any questions, gentlemen?
I, I guess I need some, need some clarification. This was originally set for the Sterling engine to be used in this entire project, as I understand it. And now we're going to the photovoltaic. This, the photovoltaic is a much lesser of, of an object out in the desert, I would suppose is the best way to describe it. The Sterling engines were up like twenty-two to twenty-five feet tall, and pretty large profile. Did at that time, was it objectionable to have it that close to the school then, or?
Well, I personally was never even notified.
Well, I've attended a number of the meetings specifically for the overlay, and it appeared very clear at, at the time that the Sterling engines were gonna be used now that the, there's no longer any funding for, for that, they'll be going to the photovoltaic, which is a much lesser of a eyesore, I suppose, if you like to call it that. Here in, in Kingman, we have three acres of photovoltaic right next to our school, and it's being leased by Unisource Energy. And those revenues are going into the school system. They're really not that much of an eyesore, if you'd like to go out and take a look, it's, it's rather appealing.
Well, I actually use photovoltaic myself, but I placed it an awfully long way from my house, so I don't have to look at it, because it is unsightly.
I see. I'm just surprised that there's any emotion about it now, as opposed to the Sterling engine.
Well, there's many different types that they can be using, so, you know, you'll get one huge reflective mirror placed, you know, less than a mile from your house. That's, that's an opposition that I would certainly support. And the amount of traffic close to a school ground, I just don't get that either.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
I have one more gentleman, before he comes up, though, Ms. Ballard, the question I would have is, I notice there's a lot more grading gonna take place. Why is, why is there more grading with this than there was before?
Mr. Johnson, members of the board, the applicant, as of this date, has not informed us whether or not there'll be additional, you know, more grading than would be anticipated with the Sterling engine or not. He has not submitted plans for the array, and whether or not there is more grading or less compared to the Sterling engine will depend upon how that array is laid out. The applicant is required to submit the array to us as part of his site plan process under twenty-seven P of the Mojave County Zoning Ordinance. So the staff will have a, have access to the layout of the, the array at that time.
What about, do we have a, was there a buffer before from the property line, and is there a buffer now? Has it changed anyway, where the other, was the prior system bigger, so it didn't take up as much area? Now we have more, more going towards the boundaries of the properties? Will they be closer to the other people?
Mr. Johnson, members of the board, there's no change in, in, you know, buffering or setbacks or any of that. The applicants have committed to, to setting back or avoiding conflicts with the railroad. At the present time, that's the only commitment that we have from them.
Thank you. Mr. Archie Green?
Thank you, Mr. Johnson, members of the board. I have a couple of issues that I'd like to address about this, the situation we're in now. When this whole program started, it was gonna be Sterling engines, they were gonna be five miles out. Live with that, not a problem. Now, all of a sudden, we're incorporating a mile out from Yuma Drive, a few hundred yards from the school. And as bad as all that is, we, we have another issue to talk about, is the rezoning, zoning it heavy industrial. What happens when these, when a solar project fails, and somebody decides to put a dump out there, or a recycle yard, or anything else? It's zoned for it, we've got no way to argue about it.
Let, let me get an answer on that. Chris, that was what I was, Ms. Ballard, that's what I was asking you about on the rezoning. We had heavy manufacturing down by the tracks, where we all agreed that's a good idea. That was a similar question I had that he brought up. Are we changing all the property to heavy industrial, or is it, rest of the property is still gonna be solar? So that if, if, say, this project doesn't go through, we don't have, you know, heavy manufacturing taking place on twenty-two square miles?
Mr. Johnson, the heavy manufacturing zoning is only between the railroad tracks and I forty. The remainder of the property would be zoned energy solar, solar photovoltaic.
Okay, so that, that one.
Answered my questions, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Those are the only if there's anybody else who'd like to address the board. Here and now, I will close the public hearing.
Superintendent Johnson, is, is there, is it possible to change the routing going into this? How, how big a thing would it be? I can ask the applicant about this. Is there a problem with that, or could it be done? Is it really, would it be a reasonable request to do that?
Mr. Hibbs?
The, the question of the new ninety-five that would be going up from the pilot location is, that's an ADOT process. It doesn't seem to have the funding at this time to be constructed, to the extent that that were built. We'd be happy to use that, but otherwise, we really do need to use the, the, come up. And, and the Polaris Road, as they refer to it, comes off of, I think it's, is it County one?
Right.
And we're about a mile south of, of Golden Shores there.
By using Interstate forty, though, where you have, you can go through the ADOTS and over the tracks?
That would be a considerable issue. ADOT does not want us to access off of, there's a way station there that would be very nice to use, but the ADOT But the ADOT, well, the Federal Highway Department won't allow us to do that. And getting across the tracks is, with the railroad, they're not at all enthused about that. So our possibilities are, having the new ninety-five, if it were to be constructed, or otherwise, use County One and then Polaris Road there. And we'd have to pave that, obviously, to keep the dust down and make sure that there weren't any issues.
I guess I'd ask Chris on this. I thought before, when we looked at the heavy manufacturing down by the railroad tracks, that was where the entrance and exit was going to be, was through the ADOT yard. Isn't that how we had that planned? We've always kind of thought that was where, and we have the off-ramp there. The state has put an off-ramp in there. It goes down, and obviously, it would have to be bridges built, you know, or whatever, to cross the railroad tracks if we get heavy traffic. But isn't that the only access we have?
Mr. Johnson, members of the board, that area of the Sterling plan, which is always planned to be a manufacturing area, was dependent. Here again, that access was coming off of the rerouted ninety-five.
One other comment, if I may, about traffic. We had originally entitled this for someplace between thirty-five and fifty thousand homes in that area. And there was going to be a great deal of grading and disturbance of the soils. There will not be anywhere near that amount of traffic. Construction will have some construction trucks coming in for a period of time. But then, for the operations, there won't be nearly that many people. So I think the traffic impacts are not nearly what people expect they might be.
Thank you. Any other questions, gentlemen, Supervisor Sockwell? The one thing I have, maybe I think part of the problem we've had is, there were public hearings, but they don't seem to have satisfied the answer to questions of the people in Golden Shores. I don't know if it would be something we could send back to have some additional public hearings due to the number of people there that requested.
Chairman Johnson, we did have public hearings in Golden Shores this fall. And it was attended by maybe sixty or seventy people. I don't have the numbers. The county would. And there was not one objection at that time to this. And if you, the distance between our project and Golden Shores has not changed from this zoning to the previous zoning. It's the same distance. And as Mr. Watson was pointing out, normal PV is much less obvious. If you take a look, and we've had some pictures, I'm not sure, Ms. Ballard, if we have those pictures taken from the property of Golden Shores or from Golden Shores to the property. But if I can describe them, in looking at Golden Shores, it looks like, you can see the trees, and there are about a pencil line on the horizon. So it's a mile away. It's the same elevation. So you're not looking down at it at all. It's on a plateau. And it's, you hardly even know it's there.
All right. I still think that we probably need to have, or at least my recommendation would be at least have another meeting with the people in Golden Shores to get everybody on the same page. Did, Mr. McQuirter, you, do you have something you wanted to say? Probably best if you come up here, we can get it on the record, sir.
Yes, we did have a meeting in Golden Shores. And there were approximately sixty-five to seventy people there. And the gentleman was mistaken. There was plenty of opposition. Numerous questions were asked that were not answered. He talked a lot, but he didn't say much, in other words.
Thank you, sir. I don't know. What is the pleasure of the board? Oh, is somebody else? Mr. Jacobs.
I think I've been to about every meeting in the last fifteen, twenty years, to every meeting in Golden Shores that has been there. There has never, ever, until this has come up, been an objection to anything here. And that road has always been where it is right now. That road has never changed to be something else. And coming across out of, off of I-40, because of the cost factor there, it isn't feasible to come and come over the railroad and all that there for a project of this. Even with the Sterling project, it was never planned. That was going to be, our main entrance was going to be there all the time, where it is, and stuff. And we've never had an objection there. As for this gentleman here saying that there was all this objection at this last meeting, that is completely false. Because there was two or three people, what they were wondering about, they said, "Well, we were told this, you know, that this was going to be done over here." And we told them that, no, it was coming in on Polaris Road, which basically, as far as, it always has been there. We went and we have accesses at that point to go to the project, even when it was a master-planned community. So I, this is all completely news to me. And like I say, for the community of Golden Shores, it's going to be such an upgrade to the businesses there and everything. And everybody I've ever talked to there says, "Boy, we really want this." I mean, it's going to help everybody, help the county, help the whole area and stuff. So I'm sort of mystified where, you know, this is coming from.
Thank you, sir.
Superintendent Johnson, I think it might be a good idea to have one more meeting between the principals and the people in Golden Shores on this issue. Let them come together, because I don't want to see this project scuttled. We run into this every time there is some sort of development comes into this county. There's got to be some gives and takes. We need jobs for the people here. We have to move forward. We just can't keep stalling off everything that comes in. So I would like, I'll make a motion that they have one more public meeting on this and bring it back at the March meeting.
Second motion? Excuse me, a motion and a second for discussion. Ms. Ballard, on that, the planning and zoning will attend and facilitate this to make sure it's taken. You attend those public hearings? Somebody from your office?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, typically on these meetings, we will attend. We let the applicant facilitate. However, since this is a board-requested meeting, the department would be more than glad to facilitate the meeting, if that's the board's wish.
Thank you. Do you have that, Ms. Bracken? All right, we have a motion and a second for the discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Mr. Taylor, what would be the appropriate thing to do on the other three items that are all under this one, this same one? They would just... All right. So we have a motion to continue. Fifty-one... Fifty-one, B, C, and D?
A, B, and C, D, A, B, C, D, E.
I'll make a motion to continue those items.
Second?
Yeah, motion and a second, no further discussion. Well, they'll come back with the, P and Z will put them back on. No further discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign, motion carries. Thank everyone for their input on that item. Item number fifty-three, discussion, possible action to approve the intergovernmental agreement between the city of Bullhead City and Mojave County for the Bullhead City Senior Nutrition Center, retroactive July first, 2011, replacing the lease and intergovernmental agreement for the Bullhead City Nutrition Center executed on July first.
Chairman Johnson, item fifty-two.
Oh. Can I get the meeting done? All right. We'll go to fifty-two. I'll open the public hearing. Discussion, possible action, adoption of Board Supervisor's resolutions twenty-twelve zero-two-four, rescind and cause the property to revert from MX to its former zoning classification of AR thirty-six A. I have no one signed up for that. Anyone like to address that issue?
I'll make a motion to approve the rescension on this.
I'll second the motion. A motion and a second, no further discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number fifty-three, discussion, possible action to approve the intergovernmental agreement between the city of Bullhead and Mojave County for the Bullhead City Senior Nutrition Center, retroactive July first, 2011, replacing the lease and intergovernmental agreement for the Bullhead City Nutrition Center executed on July first, 2011. The amended intergovernmental agreement was required and approved by the U.S. Bureau of Land Management. It contains minor changes as contained from the January tenth, twenty-twelve Board Supervisors' meeting.
Do we have anyone signed to speak on this?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
I have a couple people. Ms. Kathy Brock?
Mr. Chairman, we would need a motion on the floor.
We have a motion for discretion.
Second.
For discretion.
And a motion and a second, all in favor? Ms. Brock?
Good morning. I'm Kathy Brock, Bullhead City Council member, twenty-nine sixteen, Lederan, Bullhead City. I'd like to thank the supervisors for all the support you've given us with the nutrition center. And we ask that you continue your support by approving the lease. And we'd also like to ask, maybe if you could extend it for another year? Otherwise, we'll be back here, I guess, in May or June to do this again. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Brenda Richardson? You're fine? Okay. I was the one that had questions on this. And my questions are, as much as we love Supervisor Sockwell and his district, we seem to be giving more money to your senior centers than we are to the ones in my district and Supervisor Watson's district in the giving away of leased property. And so I'm just curious if, whatever the fair market value of that lease is, if there's money to be given to districts one and three to offset the difference in donations that Mojave County is making to the senior program in Bullhead City? That's my question. I guess I could ask the county manager or the finance director what their thoughts on that would be.
Mr. Chairman, Dave, are you here? Didn't we set the value of this at like, what, twenty, twenty-seven hundred a month or something like that? I think we set, we said this would be like a donation in kind in lieu of charging them a dollar. And I think we set the fair market value at something around twenty-seven hundred dollars a month. That was my recollection, but I don't have it in front of me here. And in our prior meetings, we had said that we were going to do that as a donation in kind. Because we're not, at this point, putting any general fund money into that like we are for both Lake Havasu City and Kingman, where we still are supporting the program with general fund money, so...
Right.
Whatever the board would like to do.
We have, later on in the agenda, but this is still covered here, we're in the process where we've opened up the work center in Bullhead City, which could have used that building that we have, our own building. But now we're out paying somebody else our tax dollars to get another lease. So it is, it's still costing the county, county money, where we could have been using that building. Is that correct?
Mr. Chairman, that's correct. And I don't, I think that was something like, and again, I don't have in front of me something like thirty, thirty thousand dollars a year to house all the workforce development, community development stuff there in the prior lease, so...
That was my thought. I was just trying to figure out, I don't know what the rest of the board members feel.
Certainly, may speak, please. Certainly want to find some equity involved for everyone. But I tell you, I really have to commend the city of Bullhead City for taking this project on. And as I understand from Councilman Brock, that they're doing a real nice job down there with the entirety of people attending. So I would hate to see us harm this program by charging them any kind of large amount of lease or rent. But I do recognize the inequity.
Mr. Chairman, I think we decided that some time ago that Bullhead City had never contributed anything to the senior programs. And when they took this over, we felt like that it would be a good thing for us to go ahead and allow them to use this building for a dollar a year. And that would be still a county contribution to this effort, to the senior centers. So I will make a motion to approve item fifty-three.
I'll second the motion. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Aye. Motion carries. Item number fifty-four, discussion, possible action to approve the twenty-twelve housing and community development needs. Identify and prioritize projects for the twenty-twelve CDBG SSP program and direct staff to determine program eligibility of these projects and prepare grant applications for submission. Supervisor Watson, are you happy with the projects you have on yours?
Yes, I'm happy with mine. We have Dave Wolf in the audience, if you'd like to have some questions answered.
Mr. Wolf, would you like to come forward and explain what you're going to do in District one?
Chairman Johnson, supervisors, District one is identified owner-occupied housing rehabilitation for low-income families and seniors and disabled. Just as kind of a background to this, on this item, on January fourth, twenty-twelve, a public hearing was held that gave an opportunity for community groups to identify potential projects for CDBG funding and to discuss community needs. We're asking the board to approve the twenty-twelve housing and community development needs. And the board also has in their backup the Community Services Department recommendations for fiscal year twenty-twelve CDBG funding. So we're also asking the board to identify those projects at that time so staff can begin working on those applications. Just to let you know that, we've received word from Arizona Department of Housing that there's been approximately an eighteen percent reduction in funding to the region from the state, based on congressional action. And so we're anticipating, we don't have the final numbers yet from WACOG, but probably a ninety thousand dollar reduction. So that will affect Mojave County's allocation.
Can you offset that from the money I just lost in the senior center from taking my district?
I wish we could.
Anything else on that? Supervisor Watson, on yours?
Aye, ma'am.
Supervisor Sockwell, do you have any questions on what you'd like to do in yours?
No, I'm okay. We've had a meeting with these people and have settled on where I'm going to direct my share of these funds, so I'm happy.
Would you like to go over District two, Mr. Wolf?
I believe the same project was identified for District two, which would be owner-occupied housing rehabilitation for low-income seniors and disabled.
And I have no problems with District three, but would you like to go over that also?
That would be a special purpose owner-occupied housing rehab program, zeroing in on ADA accommodations, such as ramps, bathrooms, accessibility issues for veterans and seniors.
Thank you. I have no problems with that. No further discussion. Is there a motion? Thank you, Mr. Wolf.
I'm making a motion to approve item fifty-four.
A second, a motion? Second, no further discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. I've got some, probably some long, long things coming up. We'll take a short, short five-minute break. You got stuff for me to sign, Ms. Bracken? You get over here. What are you doing? Start moving this stuff around.
With our warrants program. We started this back in November and since that time, we have, we have received forty-six warrants from the courts to, to go talk to the people and see if we can't get them to come in and, and give us money. Presently, of them forty-six people, we have collected twenty-two hundred and eighty dollars to date. Last week, we had ten that was just given to us, so you know, minus ten from the forty-six, that's thirty-six people that we've collected basically the twenty-two hundred dollars from. We have, there's been eighteen of those warrants have been quashed for one reason or another. Either they paid, they were rearrested, or they came into courts and had the, had the warrants squashed for court reasons. At this point, we both kind of work the program the same. We send a letter out once we receive a warrant. A, a week later, we make, we try to make a physical contact. We go to the addresses provided to us and encourage them to pay, remind them they have the warrant and, and we, we'll do this a couple of different times over the next couple of weeks. Currently, we have, Gene has brought in one person, arrested one person, brought it into the court and went before the judge and somehow, some way, he decided he could go to the bank and get money and pay for it. So, he came in and paid. We have also been talking to the constables from Bullhead and Lake Havasu as far as whether they will be part of our program. And both of them in Hav- in Lake Havasu, they have not started doing anything. Over in Bullhead, they have. Mike Hamilton over there is kind of doing the same thing we are over here. The problem that he has for arresting at this point and what we plan to work together in the future would be to go, one or both of us would go over and assist him. We don't want to go as a single person and arrest a person and bring them to court. That's why our program has, we want to do ours as the pilot. We're working out of the same office. So, at this point, hopefully, we're asking for your support to continue.
Any questions, board members?
Do you have any idea how many dollars are out there that's uncollected at this time?
You know what, originally, we thought we could come up with some numbers for that, but our office does not connect to the court systems at all and we're not, we're kind of our own little office there. Well, as we have is constable information and, and the general county information that anybody in the public has. So, we do not have access to that, to them numbers.
The, the question I would have on, all the people that you've cleared, now that each of those pay the two-hundred or two-hundred and fifty-dollar fee that was passed by the legislature, so we have...
That, that, and I can't tell you that number who has paid that fee already. That did not take effect until January...
January first.
First. And so far, the courts are only enforcing that fee if that person is arrested and brought in. So, I don't know if, if they just go in and pay it, they're, the courts are not enforcing that fee.
But don't they have clerks that do that, make the calls and stuff that you guys are doing there? I mean, if you're out arresting, somebody have a clerk to do that, but...
Well, yeah. And the, the warrants that we're getting, well, the ones that, when they become warrants, we're kind of duplicating what they're doing, but we are going out and seeing if the people are still at the location that they're at. We're out and about through the community anyways, doing our regular surveying that we do. So, it gives the courts another person to, to find out whether the person is still located where they're at, whether they're not located where they're at. And we can also talk to neighbors and relatives to see if, if we can find an alternative location for them rather than what the courts have as far as just having a forward, generally, you don't get a forward address back from the post office. They move with friends and people wanted, don't have a really good trail to, to keep track of them, especially for the courts.
Right, and I, I guess I thought, are the courts here to address this issue? Yes. Valerie, you, you sent me a, or you sent all of us, I believe, an analysis. Do you have, have that where you can put it on the board or not?
I can pit the most two current fiscal years on the board.
Okay. Kind of over the questions that Supervisor Sockwell had.
And I just want to clarify in regards to the question. I believe you're talking about the statute that just went into effect January one. It's a hundred and twenty-five dollar failure to pay fine warrant surcharge. It is only applicable to violations of Title twenty-eight. Previously, there was a ten percent surcharge added to the base fine for any outstanding warrant served by the sheriff or the constables. That statute was changed January first. It's now a hundred and twenty-five dollar flat warrant surcharge. The courts are adding that on to the warrants on top of a hundred and twenty dollar warrant assessment we have as a county ordinance that we have also.
Okay. These numbers that you, that you gave us, because we talked before and I figured they would be pretty high. If I'm reading them right, just for three years, in, in outstanding, we have three-point-two million in ten, eleven, nine, ten, we have three million, and in eight, nine, we have two-point-nine million dollars. So, we're running about nine million dollars owing the courts in fines that we, that we know of. Do you think this is pretty acrobatic, all of them?
It, it, it is. I believe that is correct, but it, it's not a full picture. Again, that's just a snapshot. These numbers are constantly in flux and part of the reason why is, to kind of give you an idea of the collection rate, we focused on cases that were adjudicated because sentences imposed, the fines imposed at time of sentencing. So, for those amounts that are outstanding on there, if people are delinquent and they're not making their payments, they are set up and put into the FARE program and we are constantly getting in payments all the time for outstanding collections. So, tho- those amounts change daily based on the payments the courts receive for amounts outstanding. But of course, because like I said previously, we don't ever write off anyone's debt, it does look like there is a large amount of outstanding collective.
Does that answer some of your questions, Supervisor Sockwell? Supervisor Watson, anything else? I guess, this tremendous amount of, of debt that was out there, were you able to find where, we had a collection agency previously that used to do this. Are they still on the payroll?
What the courts have done, the Supreme Court has implemented what they call the FARE, which is the Fines Restitution and Enforcement Program. And that requires the courts to pit any delinquent cases into this program. And so, they have contracted with a collection agency and they do all the collection efforts on behalf of the court. And that involves the skip tracing, the telephone calls, additional notices, they place it on the credit report. The two things that are very successful with this program is that it's part of the Arizona Tax Intercept Program. So, anyone that gets a refund at the end of the year, or if for some reason they have Arizona lottery winnings and they have an outstanding fine with the court, it gets intercepted and goes to paying their fine. And also, if they have a vehicle within the state of Arizona, a vehicle registration hold is put on that vehicle until they pay their outstanding fine with the court. Unfortunately, that's only within our state. One of the things we would hope the board would support would be doing a resolution. We are going, there's a bill at, at the federal level for a federal tax intercept, which would work with federal tax returns, and I think it would greatly increase collection efforts.
Do you know what the percentage is of uncollected fines in the state, the averages, offhand?
I do not know, but I could probably get that from the Supreme Court for you, sir.
What I'm getting at is like in ten, eleven, Bullhead City was forty-eight percent they didn't collect. And overall, we were at thirty-six point six percent. And then in nine, ten, we were at thirty point two-eight percent. So, either this company that the state is using just cherry picks and takes all the easy ones and makes their money, doesn't, doesn't appear that our numbers have changed any if we're using these guys too as far, I mean, it's actually gotten worse. We went from twenty-eight percent to thirty percent to thirty-six percent, almost thirty-seven percent. Do they spend any time up here with ours or are they just basically out of Phoenix?
Well, the cases are submitted electronically to the company and that's how they work on them. So, they have the information available there. And I, I'm assuming they're based out of Phoenix.
And you don't, you don't have any, they don't send you a report back saying you submitted X amount of dollars and we collected so much for you?
We can't get that information. The Supreme Court can't provide that information.
Right, because it's just, to me, it's unfair to take hard-working taxpayers and they, they get a foul of the law for some erroneous speeding ticket or whatever and they pay their fine while other guys are driving around drunk or whatever and not paying their fines and, and getting away with it, you know? We just, we don't seem to go after them. I, I hate to keep penalizing the people that show up and, and pay the fines and then the people that ignore us. We just, you know, seem to let them go all the time. But I appreciate these numbers. You, you've got us and then if you can get those other ones, I think that would be great.
Yes, I will get those to you.
Thank you.
But please be aware, I mean, it's not, people don't get off. We do issue warrants and suspend licenses. But again, those are really only effective within the county as far as warrants. We don't, because of the expense, people are not going to be extradited from outside of Mojave County or the state for outstanding fines.
Well, we're losing that money anyway. We got no problem sending the sheriffs over to pick them up and bring them back. Yes, sir.
Can I, into their, if they do go to that federal law to where they're able to do it federally, that will help a whole bunch. That's, our program is basically going after people that are just due, not somebody that is six months ago, or a year ago, or eighteen months ago. Because the longer debts out there, the harder it is to catch up to them and find them and get them to pay it. We're getting people that it was due, the judge gives them thirty days to be due and we're getting the warrants issued the next day after that thirty days is up. So, we're trying to hit them quickly rather than letting it sit out there. So, the program hopefully reaps rewards down the road where it's going to be hard to catch up for what we already have out there.
Thank you. I guess the, the county manager, the question I would have, we looked at our, our liability. I mean, what if one of our constables gets hurt? It's not like we have junior constables to take their place.
Well, I don't know quite what to tell them about, about that there. I mean, like any other law enforcement, they're, they're out there and whatever damage hat, to them happens on our time, we're, we're responsible for. I don't know if there's any, I mean, I don't know if that...
All right, why, I mean, how would we cover if they go out, they're out making arrests now and we hadn't, and they've always been in the line of fire like anything else, but now we're adding something on where you're out picking up people who owe money, who haven't paid money and they get hurt. Now, how are we going to cover their, their jobs for them while they're not there to serve their papers and do the eviction...
I honestly don't know what you do when a, an elected official like a, a constable is off the job. I've, I've never, never given that much thought, but they certainly are protected from workman's comp and all the other kinds of liability insurance coverage. I don't know whether you feel like you've upped your threshold of, of opportunity or, or not.
No, our, our day-to-day, we could be injured at any time and then not just on doing that, we could be in, you know, any kind of accident or be participating in a, in an adult activity where we could be injured. What has happened in the past is other constables has helped cover, cover the area while somebody is recuperating. So, that's just unfortunately the hazards of our, of our being a one-person position.
Supervisor Sockwell?
How, how would you propose that we solve Mr. Hamilton's problem in Bullhead City by only, by he, he being the only constable there?
Well, that's the same with Bob Crabtree over in Lake Havasu. The, and, and that's what we're working on together up here. We're not going to go arrest somebody by ourselves. We're going to go out as a team. So, we'll come up with a day to go arrest somebody over in Bullhead and we'll, one or both of us will go over and go with Mr. Hamilton, or the same thing down on Lake Havasu. Now, Bob has not started doing anything with warrants down in his courts yet, but Mike has. So, when it comes time to do an arrest, we will coordinate. We're coordinating with Sheriff's Department to get a vehicle. We've, you know, we've done all that coordinating with people. So, I think we've got a good start right at the moment. Hopefully, we can continue.
Well, I can't deny, I think, I think it's more effective to have these people confronted actually by, you know, some sort of law enforcement rather than mailing letters or making telephone calls. That, that really doesn't accomplish a whole leg of a lot.
I can make a recommendation to the board. You're concerned if one of the elected constables gets injured and who would replace them? And also, who would help the constable in Bullhead City and Lake Havasu City would be easily solved if you could give us at least a deputy constable that would rotate from Bullhead to Havasu and in the event of an injury or illness, cover for an elected constable. We could also very much use a vehicle because I've seen that going out and telling someone, hey, you're fined or you're subject to arrest. If you can't follow that up with a, can't make your threat good, it's kind of a laughable offense. And if you don't have a car to put him in, you certainly can't arrest him and handcuff him to a chain-link post while you go get a sheriff's office unit to transport for you or go borrow a car from the jail. So, that's one of the issues that I've run into is you make a threat, but you can't back it up, so. And then if you come back a day or two later with the, a sheriff's unit to transport him in, they may or may not be there waiting for you, so. That's my recommendation.
But you're, you're serving warrants, so all you have to do is get on the cell and say, hey, Kingman PD or sheriff's office, I have somebody in custody and they'll come and transport, won't they?
I haven't made that challenge yet. Sheriff Sheehan has given me access to jail units to transport in, and I think his hope is that we won't become a burden to the sheriff's office by calling for one of his units that's busy on their patrol or whatever they're doing at the time. But I, I can imagine the sheriff not sending the unit if we called.
Right. Well, you got the county manager's attention asking for another body.
Well, I was going to say, we're, we're going to begin here very, very soon. We're starting our new budget kickoff. So, a new initiatives like this need to be addressed in the overall concept of, of next year's budget, you know, given what your, what your budgets are now and what you, you know, what you could justify and request something for the future. And it certainly would have to do with how much revenue you're going to be able to bring in if you do that. So, we can do that during the budget session, Mr. Chairman.
This was a pilot program now, so we're just continuing, asking for your continued support.
Thank you very much. No further questions, Supervisor Watson?
Nope. Do you have Mike continued support?
All right, there's no action needed on that, that item. Item number fifty-six is discussion possible action authorized staff to renegotiate the management agreement between Mojave County and the Catherine Headrick Adult Center, Inc., regarding the county-owned building located at seventeen seventy-six Airway Avenue, Kingman, Arizona, to more clearly define the roles of the parties and ownership interest. I have a motion for discussion.
Anyone, do you have anyone?
Motion for discussion, now, do you make a motion to discuss?
I'll make a motion for discussion.
Second.
Second. Manager Walker?
Mr. Chairman, this agreement was entered to back in nineteen ninety-one, so it's an old agreement. It's got a lot of things in there that may not necessarily represent the, the status of what's happening today. We had a, an issue where the county attorney got involved in believing that the building might have not belonged to Mojave County and they were in a sublease, the building, to another group. And so, that kind of raised the issue. We thought we, we probably ought to go back in and, and take another look at this.
Have any questions, Supervisor Sockwell? Supervisor Watson? None? Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second. No further discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number fifty-seven, discussion possible action, direct staff to review, prepare comments for chairman's signature regarding the proposed pilot training center and base in of F-35A train aircraft environmental impact statement. I'd make a motion for discussion.
Second.
I place this on, we received a request to comment on the EIS and so, put together some thoughts. I don't know if, if the board wants to go ahead and use those thoughts, have staff direct some other thoughts or get involved in this. I think it's good to, for us to support the economic development of the rest of the state. It only benefits us too.
I certainly think that's something we should support and I make a motion that we do this.
Second's a motion?
Motion and second. No further discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number fifty-eight, discussion possible action, direct staff to audit consolidated courts to compare cost of all justice courts. I place this on the agenda. I'll make a motion for discussion.
Second.
Fellow supervisors, I put this on. We have started the consolidated court in, in Lake Havasu at the direction of, or the recommendation of the Supreme Court, that all courts should go that way, that it was a cost saving. In the past, numbers have been coming in to show it was a, it was a cost savings and I'm not sure that that's the same way it is today. I think that it was time that, you know, especially with the budget coming up and the constraints we're under, now is a good time for staff to look at the way our justice courts are running to make sure that we're using our money in the best way we can and that everything is located in the best possible location. Especially in the Lake Havasu area, the only time that we can renegotiate the contract is, is during this month, so, for the consolidated court. So, that was, that was my thought on this, to get us some feedback for our budget process. I don't know if county manager had any quick indices or Mr. LeVak?
Mr. Chairman, we'll be, we'll please to, to take a look at all those.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve out of fifty-eight.
So moved. Second.
Motion and second. No further discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, one second before I do that, I'm sorry. I had to have somebody sign, Valerie. Okay, nevermind. All right, motion and second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. Motion carries. Item number fifty-nine, discussion possible action, direct staff to evaluate the benefit of a trails program for the Mojave County website. I put this on, I would make a motion for discussion.
Second.
If I could have Mike Hendricks, we had, the board addressed this issue before and the county has taken some steps to get a program together and it's kind of, it's an update for us and, and the citizens as to what has transpired and... Mr. Hendricks, please.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I appreciate this opportunity. One of the things that we're particularly proud of on the, on what we're about to show you is the entire program, the entire webpage has been put together by Travis Lingenfelter and Economic Development. So, no outside tax dollars or no outside consultants utilized for the creation of what you're about to be presented. Anyway, I'd like to introduce Travis to give the presentation.
Thank you. Good morning, Chairman Johnson, Supervisor Watson, Supervisor Sockwell. Perched the chairman's item last year regarding a trails program or the benefit of that. As all of you know, Mojave County, we're extremely strong in our natural amenities and it's, it's definitely something that, at least from an economic development standpoint, we should take advantage of. So, starting last year, we worked with Sean Blackburn initially to, of the Parks Division to acquire an, an initial list of trails that were dispersed throughout our county and that also demonstrated the diversity of hiking that Mojave County is able to offer visitors and residents alike. Everything from hot springs on the White Rock Canyon Trail to desert rock features on the Crack in the Mountain Trail down by Havasu, to hiking in the pines on the Aspen Springs Trail System in the Walupi Mountains. So, quite the diverse range of, of hiking options available. In addition to hikers, many of these trails are also available to, to mountain bikers and to equestrians as well, so. Economic Development Staff, once we had the initial list of trails from the Parks Division, we collaborated with the County Flood Control Division staff on the creation of some first-class trail maps. And I'm going to show you an example of one of those this morning. I'd like to thank, right now, Shannon Summers, Kuntat Chaicharn, and Brian Anderson of the Flood Control Division in the creation of these professional maps that we have associated with each one of the trails. They did that in their spare time. They assisted us when they could and it, the maps that they actually produced are some of the best trail maps you, you've probably ever seen. They're, they're very professional looking. At the present time, I think we have about six trails on there right now and we're working on adding the three additional trails presently, once the maps are finalized. Staff will continue to add trails to the program on an ongoing basis. So, we actually worked with IT, Nathan, in, in the IT department to make the page directly accessible from our Mojave County page. If you were to click on visiting Mojave County, and then there at the bottom, there's a link that says county hiking trails, that takes you directly to the county hiking trails program. And on that page, this is one page of our economic development website, which was recently completely revised. It's probably the most comprehensive regional economic development site we have in northern Arizona. So, this particular tab, the hiking is under what's called work and play in Mojave County. Here we have all of the trails listed by name and also a lot of descriptive information, including a description of the trail, directions, trail, level of difficulty, easy, moderate, strenuous, the distance of the trail, elevations, and a host of other information. If I can get the map example, here's one of the trail maps that the Flood Control Division produced. You could charge for these things and they're available for free on our website. I mean, very professional looking and I'm proud of, of what has been created and posted to the website presently and I look forward to building on it. And I'm open to any questions that you may have.
The question I would have is, are we, are we able to expand by bringing in, you know, hiker organizations or, or those people where they, maybe they could make submissions? Obviously, the expertise that you brought in here to make these is, is really great. You know, we're, we're people who actually hike them. I've seen sometimes where you could, you know, put pictures up so people get an idea of, you know, what's out there if they're going through the hike, you know, ahead of time, or people who come forward and say, hey, there's a trail over here maybe nobody knows about and, and where we could have them, I don't know if they can go through with GPS and locate the trail for us for something to put up, or is, is that a possibility so we can expand this program?
Absolutely. When I took the, the director position a little over a year ago, we relied on a third party to do all of our content management and that was one of the first things we changed. We brought all of our content management in-house. So, I can tell you that we have the technology to do that right now. And the live and play section of our economic development site, it's a huge opportunity to be collaborative like that. And I'm not sure if IT can do it, but if you can take us to the live and play tab on the economic development website, to the Mojave County Activities page, we've already indicated some, some collaborative type of relationships. There's some links there to regional ATV. There's some links there in blue in the second paragraph. If you were to click on one of those links, for instance, I mean, there's links to regional white water rafting up at the Walupi Tribe. The, there's a fishing website that the local anglers maintain. There is ATV groups. I think there's like six or seven ATV, ATV groups. They have a, a directory page, a main page that we've linked to. So, anybody that's interested in getting involved in any of those activities, they know exactly who's involved in it right now in our region and who do they need to contact to become a part of it.
I've got a question. Supervisor Watson?
Thank you, Chairman Johnson. Mr. Lingenfelter, are you getting any cooperation from Sue Bowlen and her National Trails Project?
I have not heard of, I don't know who that is yet, but I'd be happy to work with her. I mean, I'm the type of guy that I'll work with anybody and then we'll, we'll produce something that's worthwhile, so if you want to give me the contact information...
I'm sure you are. She's quite anxious actually to get the National Trails Program. This is in the Dolan Springs area, so I'll get that information to you.
Great. I know that we've worked with some, some individuals in, in the open area. They have a trail system. That's one of the trails that we initially posted. The trails we have on there now, it, it's a really good snapshot of what our county has. They're dispersed all over, all over the county and it, it's just a good cross-section of the, of the trails. I mean, this could really be a full-time job. I know that Havasu Visitors Bureau, they, that's their job, that's what they do and it's a full-time job and, and I'm, I'm proud of what we've been able to do just on a part-time basis, so.
No, you, you've done quite a bit and maybe that'd be someplace where, you know, we have like, the sheriff's department has their volunteers... have, like, the Sheriff's Department has their volunteers, where people would get involved in a volunteer position to, to help out with that, especially with adding more trails, because like you said, if we have, and Ms. Bowman is here and wants to speak to this item, but, you know, people who have an interest and want to, want to put in Dolan Springs or Omen or those areas where they, they bring it into us with the, all the GIS measurements and all that stuff, and it's pretty interesting, and to help their, their economies in those areas too.
Absolutely. As a regional economic development entity, I'd say that if there's anybody out there that wants to put something on our website, they think there's a section for that, then contact us, and we'll work through it.
Thank you. Any questions, Supervisor Sockwell? Thank you, Travis. Supervisor Lingenfelter, appreciate what you've done. Sue Bowman?
My name is Sue Bowman, I live at sixteen-one-five-four Cedar, Dolan Springs, Arizona. Good morning, gentlemen. Mr. Johnson, I'd like to commend you for your action taken last, this past year of setting up a website for our trail systems here in the county. They are needed to draw tourism, is a quality of life that will draw businesses also, and our trail system is under the auspices of the Mojave County Parks System. We just do the pick and shovel stuff, and we harass shunts and everything else, and Mr. Watson's been very helpful with our project also. The National Trails Day this coming year might be held in a ban, it's because you need to have six months to do anything with our great BLM, and I'll be out of the area quite a bit this year. But we are doing a National Trails Day with our Mount Titten School, fourth graders come March twenty-first, and it's going to be centered on historical areas near the school and archaeological things. And Travis, I have talked to you when you first got started on this program, and I think you have a copy of our, our maps also, but also if you contact the Bureau of Land and Management, we have a fantastic, sure, bad foothills recreation trail system that should be advertised also in our county. Thank you.
Thank you very much. There's no action needed on that item. Just for an update. At number sixty, discussion possible action, direct staff take appropriate action regarding removal of Black Mesa Pipeline. I placed this on the agenda, I'd make a motion for discussion. Second. Place this back on the agenda because we have not heard from Black Mesa Pipeline, so open for suggestions on how we should go about either engaging our attorneys to get their attention that we are serious about the removal of these pipes.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to ask Steve to come up. What, what we've discovered, and I don't have all the details, is that a portion of that pipeline, Black Mesa struck a deal with Southern Link to use part of that for some of their cables, internet wiring, et cetera, et cetera. So, Steve, you want to, you want to pick up and see if we can clarify that? I don't know, and maybe Steve can answer, when did that happen? Did it happen while we were, the board was doing a negotiation with Black Mesa? Did it happen subsequent to that? And I don't, I don't have the answer to that, and I don't know if Steve's had the ability to get, to get that from either Southern Link or, or Black Mesa.
Chairman Johnson, members of the board, County Manager Walker, One Oak Partners, the holding company for Black Mesa Pipeline Incorporated, sent a request to Mojave County in June two thousand and eleven with the desire to terminate their franchise agreement, their longstanding franchise agreement with the county. The Board of Supervisors at their September two thousand and eleven meeting directed Black Mesa to remove all of the Black Mesa Coal Slurry Pipeline, the public right-of-way in the unincorporated areas of the county. Subsequent to that, or previous to that, I should say, in August of two thousand and eleven, the board also approved a mechanism by which proposals, engineering-based proposals could be brought forward for approval of construction. And then in January of two thousand and twelve, the board did approve an agreement with the Bullhead City Airport Authority, which did allow for an engineered section of pipeline to remain in place. So the standing directive of the board as of the two thousand and eleven, September two thousand and eleven meeting, was for Black Mesa Pipeline to remove all sections of the Coal Slurry Pipeline. We have been informed through Southern Link Communications, which maintains cable television equipment throughout Mojave County, the unincorporated areas, that they are owners of a section of Black Mesa Pipeline that traverses a, an area in Golden Valley, namely along the Ship Drive Corridor up to Bakobi Road, I believe is the westernmost boundary. That quitclaim assignment was filed and recorded with the Mojave County Recorder on January sixth, two thousand and eleven, so the timeline is such that Southern Link has taken ownership as of January two thousand and eleven and previous to the June two thousand and eleven notification by One Oak Partners of the desire to terminate the franchise agreement.
Right, now, the problem I have with that is, we set the franchise, I mean, it's our right-of-way, the county's right-of-way, and any franchise agreement needs to go through the Board of Supervisors. I don't believe, I think that's where we need to give direction to our attorneys. If we had an agreement with Black Mesa Pipeline, I do not believe that they have, they don't own anything, they just have the ability to put something in our right-of-way when we give them permission, and when they say they no longer want to use our right-of-way, when we say they remove it, they don't have the option to say, we're going to give it to some other corporation or sell it to somebody else. That's not their option. I believe that we, as a board, need to look at who actually owns the right-of-way, who's in control, or we could be in a lot of trouble later on with people just saying, you know, some guy comes in for something innocuous, saying, I just want to put the right-of-way for a phone line, and then we find out they're running whatever, nuclear waste through a line or something, so.
Mr. Chairman, I would think, under any set of circumstances, we would need then to have a separate right-of-way agreement with Southern Link. Now, there may be some advantages to, to the county relative to looking into that, to see, because those would, would be serving a lot of, a lot of folks, probably in the Golden Valley and maybe other areas. We also have some, some need to run some stuff ourself, I understand, so I think it would, it would behoove us then to be in contact, as you desire, be in contact with Southern Link and work out whether it is in our advantage then to strike a right-of-way agreement with them for the section that they're, that they're going to use. So I would just put that on the table for whatever you'd like for us to do.
Supervisor Watson, do you have something?
Well, we certainly need to clarify our liability, and that's my main concern.
I guess it's possible we could just send a tobacco down there to rip up that line and find out where Southern Link's hooked in at, huh?
I don't think that's the choice.
Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we direct staff to, to check, check into this further, and come back to us in March and let us know exactly what's going on.
Second motion. Would that be enough direction for you to?
Chairman Johnson, members of the board, yes, we've had preliminary discussions with Southern Link as to their intent of utilizing the Black Mesa Pipeline. We do understand they desire to use the pipeline as a conduit to protect their telecommunications equipment, their cable television equipment, and it would be also their pleasure to pursue a license agreement with the county inclusive of that section of the Black Mesa Pipeline that they have received ownership of.
Right, and then, at the same time, we could devise them a law that they, they cannot put stuff on our right-of-way without our permission, so, you know, coming back and asking permission later on isn't exactly going to endear them with the Board of Supervisors. We have a motion and a second, no further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, same motion carries. At number sixty-one? Let me make sure. Number sixty-one, discussion possible action, audit of county-owned buildings suitable for library annex as requested January tenth, two thousand and twelve, Board Supervisor Meeting. Supervisor Watson?
Motion for discussion?
Second.
Motion and second, Supervisor Watson?
Yes, as part of the second to the motion from the last week meeting, or last month's meeting, we requested from staff to investigate and see if there would possibly be any other space in any other county buildings that might be available, and as, as of yet have not received any information from staff, but...
I don't, if we have the minutes there, I think that was added at, at the last minute, I don't think, we're in, we're in process of working that and getting it all done, but I don't think there was any timetable on that. I, I didn't realize this was a reconsideration of the prior agenda item, so we're, we're working on it, and I, I...
Could it be ready by, could it be ready by the next meeting in March?
Yes, sir.
Did I make a motion that we delay this until our March meeting?
Thank you, I'll second the motion.
For discussion, I guess I'd ask the attorney on this, we are doing an audit of county buildings, which we should have, you know, at any time, we should know what we have, but we have entered into a extension on the library annex lease. Now, that isn't, I mean, if, as far as I'm concerned, that's a done deal, that, we can't bring that back, well, we can bring it back up, but then we get into liability issues, so we're just going to get a, any action that would be taken would be, well, at least, obviously, the majority of the board would have to vote, but would be on the renewal part. Would that be to keep us legal and from being sued by everybody?
Chairman Johnson, if I understand your question, the, this agenda item here would just be basically a report of the suitability of other buildings. If, if it would be the board's wish to reconsider the library annex lease, there would have to be a noticed item to that effect.
Right.
The motion to reconsider, and reopen that discussion.
Right.
Respect to that annex lease, okay? Just so we know, okay?
All right, we have a motion and a second for continuing this item. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
One second before I do that, something was signed up here. Elmer Whitaker?
Mr. Chairman, before we get started, because there's been a lot of responses to this, that this is about preparing an audit only, that's, that's listed on, on this agenda item.
Yes. Mr. Whitaker, state your address, please.
Hi, I'm Elmer Whitaker from Golden Valley, Arizona, seven zero nine South Mormon Flat Road. Chairman Johnson, Supervisor Sockwell, Supervisor Watson, I'm in support of the reviewing investigation of the library lease contract as motion by Supervisor Watson. Chairman Johnson, I want to say a few words to the answers we, we the people received the last time at the supervisor meeting in January tenth regarding the library lease, in which we the people were told by you that the Board of Supervisors does not discriminate. Actually, I find the opposite to be true. Over the past few years, the Board of Supervisors has discriminated against many of their constituents, including denied them access to the auditorium, refused to let them talk, having them arrested or dragged out of the building for numerous reasons. May I respectfully request that the chairman no longer tells the people, his constituents, that they are now, that they are not being discriminated against. To the people, it is bad enough if they find themselves discriminated against, they should not have to suffer insult or injury, in my opinion. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, board. I yield the time back.
Mr. Robinson, Stephen Robinson?
Chairman Johnson, members of the board, my name is Stephen Robinson, I live at thirty-four thirty-nine North Bowie Road, Golden Valley. I was glad to hear Supervisor Watson speak up on this issue, and I know that it is being continued, but I wanted to address one statement that was made in regards to this lease, the current lease, that is, I assume you're saying is inviolate because it's already been approved. Clearly, there's been a lot said, both here and in the paper, about this lease, as far as who was involved in the negotiation of this lease. There's accusations of ignorance, which I felt were inappropriate, and that's why I've done serious diligent study into the law. And when the law was quoted by Mr. Taylor and by Annie Freworth Nelson, where they said five oh three would be that only, that they shall, any officer or employee shall refrain from voting upon or otherwise participating in any manner as an officer or employee such contract, sale, or purpose, or purchase, they left out the phrase that any officer or employee shall make known that interest, and that's a significant issue because two of the people were employees that are also members of this situation. Now, because this making known the interest is significant, only in the respect that, according to press release on April fifteenth, two thousand and nine, from Mr. Walker's office, it said, "The clerk of the board, Public Information, Office of Management and Budget Elections, Risk Management, Library District and Television District will continue to report to the county manager's office, however, the television and library districts will be coordinated by assistant to the county manager, Yvonne Orr." So if I read that correctly, Ms. Orr had a direct responsibility. Why is that significant, and why is it an issue regarding this, the potential of this lease? In thirty-eight five eleven, it says, "The state's political subdivisions may, within three years after execution, cancel any contract without penalty or further obligations made by the political subdivision if any person significantly involved in initiating, negotiating, securing, drafting, or creating a contract on behalf of the political subdivision is at any time an employee of this other organization." So therefore, because Ms. Orr, according to the guidelines presented, she was a significant issue, a member of the process, and I think it should be opened up for future debate about cancellation of this contract, and I would request an opinion from the county attorney on this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, those, those items brought up by Mr. Whitaker and Mr. Robinson are not on the agenda, but that would be something that one of the board members would have to bring up for a reconsideration if they, they so desire to. So we've made a motion and a second to continue until the staff comes back with the audit of the buildings.
Yeah.
Okay, so...
We have a motion.
Yeah, we have a motion and a second.
I believe that...
I didn't vote on that, I forgot I had two people signed up.
Okay. The time value on that was next, next month, is that correct?
Next month. Okay. We have a motion and a second for continuation till next month, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign, motion carries. At number sixty-two, discussion possible action, direct staff to immediately cease any further building security measures and reevaluate once the new Board of Supervisors is seated. Supervisor Watson?
Motion for a discussion?
Do we have a second for that? Do we have a second for the, on the?
One second.
No second? I'll second for discussion.
Okay. Thank you for your second. May I bring my concerns?
Yes, sir, Mr. Supervisor Watson?
Item number sixty-two, the, the premise of my thought here, and I don't want to really go into a great deal of the security that we have here or at other buildings, my concern is twofold. The, the security measures that we have at this building and the buildings that we have a high value to, I think we should give the new board that will be elected in November an opportunity to, to reassess, reevaluate that at the time of their entry into taking office. The other portion of my concern is simply that... The other portion of my concern is simply that we're taking a very large effort in order to secure our buildings here and our employees here, but what efforts are we taking to make sure that we're protecting our other employees at other buildings? That leads into the problem of the, how much are we going to have to invest in security measurements in all our buildings throughout the entire county system? I think it begs for an examination, and once we secure these buildings, and once we've established those security measures, it'll be very difficult for us to ever walk away and not enforce the security again. And this is my, the basis of my thoughts and my concern.
Matt Smith, county attorney, signed up to speak on this issue? All right, looking for him, I didn't see him.
Chairman Johnson, Supervisor Watson, Supervisor Sockwell, our esteemed clerk of the board, Barbara Bracken, Mr. County Manager Ron Walker, Mr. Taylor, good morning to you all. My concern, of course, is for my office, and that's really their only reason I'm here today, is to speak for my office, as well as for the public defender's office and the legal defender's office. Understand that budgetary times being what they are, money is very tight. We do have certain concerns in the county when it comes to employee safety. One of the big concerns, of course, is for the Board of Supervisors and the county employees in this particular building. And in particular, I think this board has correctly realized that there is some risk involved when you are making decisions on a, now every month basis, that routinely affects the property and monetary interests of a lot of people. Basically, the decisions you make are gonna irritate a lot of people, and people are gonna walk away from here quite often mad about the decisions that are made. Most decisions, at least a certain percentage of people are gonna be very upset about it, and because of that, you need to have security. We have the metal detectors, we have the security guards, we have our Mr. Bob Prince, who routinely inspects this room before every board meeting. In the same way, the court building, you need security there because you've got the rights of people being affected to a great degree. Not only you have people going to prison or jail, and people that are relatives of those people being very upset, but maybe even worse than that are the child custody battles, where parents are losing their children. And if you ever go over there, you wanna see people that are angry and upset, you know, it's off the charts. Lesser threat, no question, but you also have to look, I think, at our office and the public defenders and the legal defender's office. We are dealing with people in the system that are inherently violent, those who are charged with crimes. We have cases right now involving known outlaw motorcycle gangs with heightened security at the courthouse because of that. So, what I would ask is that you at least consider for the public defender's office, legal defender's office, and our office, to perhaps direct staff to do a needs assessment or a risk assessment for the security of the employees there, particularly our front office receptionist, Sherry, who's been with us for over ten years and certainly could use the peace of mind. The last point I wanna make is that I believe that for the most part, the expenditure of this money has already been made. The security glass, the shatterproof glass, bulletproof glass, has already been purchased, as well as some materials to make the drywall bulletproof. So, I think the only costs that remain are for engineering costs and the installation, whatever would be outside of what the county would normally be expending. So, I would ask you to consider that, realizing that the budget being what it is. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions of county attorney?
Mr. Chairman, if I could, thank you, Matt, for that. As a matter of fact, we do have in process upgrading security in your area, public defenders, legal defenders, and also on the third floor here. Those monies are spent out of this year's budget, so they're already, we've appropriated the money already, I believe we've got the materials, do we not, Richard? The answer to that is yes, we do have those materials. I'd like to go on to say that for us to do nothing between now and the time a new set of supervisors would be here means that you are gonna be doing next year's budget, beginning very soon, the two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen budget. Any new initiatives for security, wherever they may be, would be a part of that spending program, which you as the supervisors, not able to have the opportunity, but the duty to rule on that budget. Any changes in the budget that a new board in two thousand thirteen would choose to make certainly could be made by amending the budget in any way that they may choose. But I think, and in your backup, staff put some material in there that talks about how we look at our buildings, the ratings. We've sent people out on, who are able to go in and take a look at a facility like the county attorney's asking, and make a reasonable threat assessment on those buildings. And that's how we go about doing this. That's how we would go about making any new recommendations that might come into next year's, or, well, the two thousand twelve, thirteen budget, which you have to approve by August.
Anybody else have any questions of the county attorney?
I just have one comment.
Supervisor Watson.
If I could, Matt, make sure you get the bulletproof drywall.
Yes. Thank you. Appreciate it. Thanks for your time.
Just one thing. When it comes to security, I don't know if you can place a dollar and send value on life or not, Matt. I'm all for security because I think with some of the things that we've seen in the last couple of years, it's certainly warranted. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, Mr., I guess from a security perspective, and they, and risk management works directly for me, you have a process in place where you can make every one of these decisions, and you're gonna be faced with them in the budget. So, if you, I mean, depending on which way you go here, whether we would include any security initiatives in next year's budget. And I guess that's what we would need to know from you today. Do we continue assessing security and continue try to make reasonable decisions about security based on the threat assessments that, and they change from time to time? So that's, I would just like clear direction on how would you like for us to deal with that issue in this year's budget, because otherwise, we must deal with it in some manner.
I do have a comment.
Supervisor Watson.
Yes. As you're probably well aware by now, the reason I brought this item the way I did was the concern in safety of all our employees. We also, at this juncture, must also take a look at the reasons why we have threat assessments, evaluations, exist today. The reason that the current level of threat exists today is much of our own attitude and much of our own actions. Now, that, please, please do not. This is a very, this is a very serious subject, because we are looking out at the good, or the good of our people that work with us. And I just think that we need to be more cognizant, possibly, of our own actions and our own attitudes that brings those threats to us. That's really all I wanna say.
I would have to disagree with that. When I first took office fifteen years ago, there was a sign in the old boardroom that says, "No weapons allowed," and one of the people running for supervisor at that time was Mac McCarty, and he'd been arrested by the sheriff's department. We took the sign down and allowed people to carry weapons, because I always felt it's Arizona, and so do the board, that, you know, it's your right to carry weapons. I believe that the response that came from this board was due to the people openly carrying weapons into our boardrooms, into our facilities, acting in a manner that wasn't respectful of themselves or their surroundings, which was frightening other people in our building. And I believe it was with very serious consideration that I voted to place metal detectors and remove weapons, because I feel that we all should be able to carry weapons, but we should not display them in an open manner. I feel that's a little carried away. But once we did that, I think that we have an obligation to, and a liability, to protect all the employees everywhere, and I think that we should continue to, even though I know it's costing us a bundle of money that I think could be better spent somewhere else, but we have, just because of liability, we can't stop what has been started now. That's my opinion. Thank you. Do we have a motion on this? No, no motion, so it'll die. Discussion possible, action at number sixty-three, direction of outside counsel regarding the one point four million dollar donation and prisoner shift. I placed this on the board after the board met an executive session. I'd make a motion for discussion.
Motion for discussion?
This is just to basically update the public. We've received letters from the president of the senate and the speaker of the house saying that they would like to work with us regarding the cost shifts to our county. The governor in meetings has also stated her desire to stop the shifts to the state. And while the joint legislative budget committee released its numbers on January thirty-first, and those numbers are not good, they list the state's obligations at nine point eight three billion. That includes one point two billion in rollovers. Now excluding the rollovers, that's eight point six billion dollars. And while the state is predicting to have more in revenues than they spend, they are not including the billions in outstanding debt. We have met with outside counsel and can proceed with litigation or accept the olive branch extended to us by our governor and the state president and the speaker of the house, so it's up to the board, that we, public make our, decide, everybody have the idea of the direction we're going in, so what is the feeling of the board is to go ahead with our lawsuit or to trust the governor and the senate president and speaker of the house?
I'd like to make a motion, if I could, please.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Chairman Johnson. I'd like to make a motion that we withdraw our demand of the one point four million in hopes that the governor will come through with the promises that she has made to all fifteen counties.
You have a second on that?
I'll second, the motion is.
Motion and a second, and just for clarification, the attorney that we hired will not be billing us, so there's no out-of-pocket cost for anything that we've done so far for private attorney. We have a motion and a second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign, motion carries. Number sixty-four is approval of special liquor license for Lake Havasu City Main Street Association. Have no one signed up for this. I have a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion and a second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign, motion carries. Number sixty-five is a presentation updated by the superior court, representatives on the recent inmate escape in Mahla County Courthouse. Just checking to make sure it was still this morning. Good morning, Chairman Johnson, Supervisor Sockwell, Supervisor Watson. Here to just share some thoughts and some things that have happened, as requested regarding the escape. Prior to doing that, might I just digress, just one comment, and just note that today they opened up the new entrance to the Lake Havasu facility. The courts have been asking for that for years, and I know with the support of the county that happened, and appreciate that, and I, speaking of security, I know that'll enhance the security down at the Lake Havasu facility. So appreciate the support and all the work done by Mr. Prince and those that were involved in that. Regarding the court security, as you know, the court relies upon the sheriff to transport, to maintain, and to control those that are brought over for hearings. We have a good relationship and work well with them, and we've been in contact with them on several occasions since this happened. A few things that we've immediately done, we've initiated some sweeps of the courtroom with our own, the security staff that's hired on through the county, to make sure that they reviewing, they're reviewing the chairs that are used. You know, as, in our facilities, we're really not set up appropriately for housing those inmates. We don't have hard chairs, we don't have hard plastic chairs, whatever they come, and they sit in our jury chairs, and it's difficult to replace those. So we've started to sweep them in the mornings, sweep them during the lunch hour, to make sure that nothing would be hidden in there in the future. So we've taken some of those steps immediately. We're reviewing the courtroom activities, paying more attention to what might be going on in there as well. We're making sure those courtrooms are locked during non-court usage. Generally, that was being done before, but it wasn't being followed through, there wasn't a routine process to do that. We do have a process set up now to make sure those courtrooms are locked, and members of the public just aren't sitting in there unattended. They are public rooms, but when court's out of session and there's no longer, the judge has gone for lunch, or before the court session starts in the morning or after closes in the afternoon, we're making sure they're locked down, everybody's out. So we're following through on that and paying more attention to those activities. We've reviewed our screening protocols with our staff, again, with our staff security, making sure that our machines are working properly, making sure that they're following the protocols that have been set up. So we're, again, have gone through and reviewed that with Mr. Lawless, and not only in our Kingman facility, but in all of the court locations, so we're following through on those things as well. On January thirtieth last week, we met with the sheriff's staff, Chief McCabe and Bruce Brown and others, met with them, talked about what had happened, and shared some thoughts, and are continuing to identify areas that we might be able to do to make some improvements there, better ways to control the inmates, the individuals that are brought over. We talked about, or they had suggested the idea of perhaps building a Sally Port and attaching it somehow onto our court facility. Obviously, that's a, if you go to any criminal buildings around the state, you're gonna find they all have Sally Ports. Several years back, when we were looking at a new law and justice facility, of course, there would have been a facility like that built into it. There are a couple possibilities. We've started to explore the idea. Sheriff's Office has indicated that, you know, they might have some funding available through jail enhancement funds or, that we could use, so we're starting to look at that, what that would involve, what areas we'd have to block off, how we would enclose that, what exits would be closed down. So there's, we're starting some work on that, and we will follow through with the sheriff's office, will likely have to have meetings with the city and follow up with them as well. We'll obviously have to get the county offices involved with that as well, to make sure we're on track and involved with that. So those are, that's just, is something that's initially been discussed. One of the other ideas that, when we talked with the sheriff, was setting up some type of handheld radios or some type of communication. We don't have that going on right now. When they pull up, their sheriff's staff pull up, and they, they're coming in the back doors. We're not necessarily aware of when they're coming or when they're not. I mean, we have general ideas, but they've talked about maybe getting us some radios that would communicate, that would allow us to communicate with them. There are some staffing concerns with that. The idea would be that we would then have one of our staff meet them at the back door and provide some assistance. You know, we only have two security guards in our building, and then we have Bob Lawless, who's available for all of the court facilities. So we'd have to look at that and evaluate that, and that, again, might be something we'll have to bring up in our budget as well with that idea. And then we've been, we've had some discussions with our judicial officers as well, getting some ideas from them, obviously, what their feelings are, what their ideas are for security, and if they have any other direction on that, so we're working on that. I just wanna note, in March of two thousand seven, we did have the U.S. Marshal Service come out and do a report. Back at that time, we were still looking, or there was discussions about a new law and justice facility. I brought that report back to a meeting that we, in front of the board back then. I don't know if you recall, I was new on the job as a court administrator at that point, so I have a vague recollection of it. But we do have that report, and in that report, you know, it talks about some of these areas that we need to improve. And obviously, it suggests a facility that is set up for processing inmates and having secured locations, having separate. secured locations, having separate traffic patterns, and all kinds of issues that we can't address in our current historic facility. But they did talk, you know, there was some general discussions. One of them was about having better radio communication, which I mentioned, something we need to look at. They talked about prisoner transport, one-on-one type of transport, for every individual you're bringing over, you should have a sheriff's staff there. Obviously, that is difficult to do, given the manpower that we have. It mentioned bailiff usage, having perhaps a bailiff in each of our courtrooms. We do not have bailiffs in our courtrooms, but that was one area touched on as well. And then it talked about improving some of our card key access, some of our security access to our building. We have done that. We've been able to do that. We've been able to build out our front entrance, too, and make it a better secure area coming in as well. So those are some of the things that we've done. We're continuing to look at it. We're going to continue to meet with the sheriff's staff to see if, what we can do, and particularly on this idea of building out a Sally Port, and see if we can't get some kind of a secured location for when they pull up, before they bring anybody out, they're locked into an area where they can't escape. So those are some of the things, that's some of my initial feedback on that.
Question that, the first thing that came to my mind was, we've been paying for a supervising security person for the courts, and to find that something as easily done as locking our courtrooms wasn't being done was surprising to me, if not alarming. It reminded me more of what we just went through with our state prison, where we, the basic things hadn't been done. And so I guess those things are curious to me. It's the same thing with where we put in, you know, like all of us in this room, walked through the security when we came in here and you came in, but when we get to courts, then certain people bypass the security system to get in. And I think those are things that really need to be reevaluated, and the security consultant that you use now or that you have in place. I guess just the idea that courtrooms weren't locked when all you have to do is push a button just amazed me, and especially with the way things have gotten more dangerous and with escapes and taking place more from courtrooms, you know, getting to be more of a commonplace thing, the sweeps of those, because I know you're, you are constrained with setting prisoners the same place you set the jurors, so, you know, I'm sure any help that the county manager and his evaluation staff, and you said you're already meeting with the sheriff and those guys to make sure we don't have any shortcomings in the future. We're more than happy to help you with, and we appreciate you coming in and giving us an update. Does anybody have any other questions? Thank you very much, Ken.
Okay. Thank you.
That's it, so we are adjourned.